We'll turn to co-ops. And there was a clarification being made on co-ops and that wanted to happen at this time at school. Otherwise, let's return to Commissioner McGraw's questions first. Let's make sure those are answered and then we will be looking. Let me get my notes out real quick as what item that was. Is staff prepared to answer Commissioner McGraw's questions? Mm-hmm.
Chair members of Commissioner Greg Gernsley, planning and zoning. We did go back and address Commissioner McGraw's questions. We also had the opportunity, I think, to meet with Ryan Nels and with the co-ops. And we went through and discussed, and I think, a lot of the questions that, and you should have them on the dais right now, that Commissioner McGraw had asked. A lot of the co-ops are operating currently in those areas that are designated single-family, as single-family homes. Their ownership might be a little different than you might find in a single-family home or duplex, possibly even apartment building. As the way that they operate, might be a little different how they function, take care of the building, and own the grounds and the structure itself. We, after talking with them, talking with our consultants, are suggesting actually to create one new use to address a category for larger cooperatives where they just have sleeping units. So you would have a detached sleeping unit from a common building where you might have a kitchen and common living room, and that would be designated as a cohousing. When we talked with, I don't know if Neil is actually here or not, but they seem to be open to that because it actually fills a gap that doesn't exist. And then also to expand the cottage court, to say that they could be dwelling units or sleeping units and addressing some of the concerns about occupancy because these are going to be smaller units on multiple buildings, on smaller lots, to put in a similar, a limitation on unrelated people to two. That would be similar to what we have in an ADU today. And so I think earlier the commission acted on cottage courts having four for a lot or eight on a wider lot, but that would address that concern. For the cohousing use, and this is actually what we're talking about from that short sheet, the parking would be similar to a group residential use for those larger cooperative or cohousing buildings and maybe some of the group residential buildings.
So we have two sheets in front of us. One's stapled, one's not. The one that is stapled, and this is Commissioner McGraw's questions and the answers to those questions from staff.
Right.
Okay. Second sheet is what has been offered up by one of the...
Yeah, based on the questions I think that were raised and part of the discussion we had, I think, two meetings ago or three meetings ago, we would offer this as an alternative that I think that addresses the concerns that have been raised by the cooperative, co-op community.
Okay. The first question I would have is on the first underlying point, it says, remove co-op as a land use, parentheses, it is an ownership scheme that can apply to many land uses. But didn't you just say in your kind of breakdown of this that you were talking about having it as a land use?
Having a new land use called cohousing that would be in those areas where cottage courts wouldn't exist.
Okay, I got you.
That'd be a little more intense, you might find in multifamily, some of the mixed-use districts. But the important point, and I think you heard from DSD staff at a prior meeting, is that it addresses sleeping units. So there's not a good discussion in our current code where you would have a common facility, kitchen, laundry, larger living space, and separate sleeping units separate from that. And so this would address that void.
Okay. So it's just, it has a new name with new characteristics. The old name, the co-op name is...
Yes, I mean, actually, that was suggested to us, and so we thought that that would be a good name as well. Not to be confusing, if I just called everything co-op again, then people thought we were talking about everything the same thing we were talking about before.
Okay. So previously on this, and I'm going to kind of get us back in our regular kind of structure, we had divided the question before on this item, and we had taken up, remind me, we had taken up the R3 and R4, or we had taken up the R4 and we're moving down into R2 and R3, or is it the opposite of that? Staff can clarify that for me.
And so what we were suggesting is where you have the R3 and R4 might allow the cottage court...
No, 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 no. You're not answering the question. What have we already decided? Which portion of the question on this, this 233 has multiple parts to it. It has R1, R2B, R3, R3B through C, R4C, RR, and MH as one part, and allowing that to be permitted. Then it has changed cooperative housing to permitted in R4 and RM zones, and then same thing with permitted in MH, MS, and MU zones. Which portions of that have been answered? And what is the, I want to be super clear, what is the remaining question to be answered?
So what happens is where you've referenced co-op before, what the staff suggestion would be is to replace...
I understand. Which zones are we talking about?
I'm going to need just a minute to go back through and get to the right page.
We had previously voted on everything R4 and up, but we hadn't voted on R3 and down, I believe.
All right. So that was, just wanted to be clear on that. And so with this new language in front of us, do we need to go back and relook at our previous vote with respect to the naming? Or can we say the new motion is apply that naming to the other categories as well because that's just a naming and a characteristic standpoint? We have, we have language here that does not match the motion. It assists in the motion in either up or down, but it's not the same thing as the motion. So I need to go back to, is there, is there a first and a second on changing cooperative housings to, housing to permitted in R1, R2, R3? Do we want to break that up? And if, and if we do, is, we can get into the nuances of this sheet and apply it to it, or not apply it to it and decide it then?
I wonder if it wouldn't be easier to take up this sheet as one motion and how it affects that previous motion, let that be. Because the way that this sheet is laid out, our previous motion on co-op housing would be called cohousing in some categories and cottage court in some other categories.
All right. So we had, again, this is what happens when you kind of take half of a conversation from a week ago and you pull it forward to now. We had Commissioner Hart and Commissioner Kazi. Make sure that, leave this Commissioner Hart and Commissioner Kazi in making the original motion. We divided the question on that. And so in this case, you'd be offering a substitute motion at this time to take this up.
Yes.
Okay? So is there a second to using the language?
I don't know what we're talking about. Are we, I know we're trying to go back and say, now we're going to decide, but I still have questions on this.
I understand, but you, I'm going to, as soon as we decide that we're in motion on this, I'm going to allow you to ask questions to staff, and you can ask, you haven't, you can read through the answers on this, and you can ask three more questions off of this, whether or not it answered your questions, or you need to follow-up questions from this. I don't, we're not going to do another 10 questions to staff on. You've, you've got a lot of questions and answers here. Some of them might not be good enough, and so you can push on that with your three questions to follow. Is that cool?
So I have to agree that we're going to discuss co-whatever in...
You don't have to agree to any of it. Two people at this table need to agree whether or not we're going to take up the substitute motion. Well, one other person needs to take up, Commissioner Hart. All right, thank you. So we have a first and a second on the substitute motion. Is anyone opposed to the substitute motion? This would be probably you, Commissioner McGraw, I think, so we can discuss it.
I'm sorry, I have no idea what we're doing, so I'm going to just...
All right, I will offer opposition to the substitute motion so we can discuss this to help you out here. Okay? Now...
It's not to help me, I mean...
No, 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 no. You've got quite, no, I know, you've got, you've got questions. I want, I want this structure to allow your questions to happen.
Chair?
Yes.
Could we just have maybe two minutes of time on our own to read through the question answers quickly?
That's totally fine.
That way I think maybe Commissioner McGraw will give you a chance to understand which of your questions are and aren't answered.
I've read them, I know what my questions are.
Okay.
Okay. So she, let's, how about the rest of us read those questions and answers for a couple of minutes, and then we will then be caught up with Commissioner McGraw. Okay, everybody, let's, I think everybody's had a chance to get to at least a chunk of it. It is highlighted to me that there's some conversation around SDRs that may need to happen on this and the relationship between co-ops and SDRs if there is, if that may occur in certain conditions. There may be other questions, but Commissioner McGraw, if you'd like to follow up with staff with no more than three questions, then please do.
Okay. One of the things that came out of this was my questioning about retirement housing because retirement housing has some shared facilities. And so question 14 says senior retirement housing is defined in D3 as independent living centers and multifamily residential projects reserved for seniors or persons with physical disabilities or both where common facilities are provided. What is, I mean, it seems to me that some of these cohousing things are actually that same thing. So I'm just, you know, we're just talking about, now we have a use that has to do with age, which we're talking about having that same use for anyone. So it seems to me that as we try to mix this up, you know, I don't know what you call, I mean, we have a use for that which sounds very much like this new cohousing use. The only difference I see is in the cohousing use, you say, well, they might have a bath or they might have a kitchen, you know, I'm sorry, it, I think it's still a little bit confusing and where that goes for me, I mean, it means cohousing and senior housing could be the same thing, I guess, is what I'm saying. It's not being tied back to that. But it also comes into the question of occupancy because when you're going to have one parking place for eight people, that's, that's pretty dramatic.
Yeah, let's, let's stay on, what is the question? The question is senior housing relationship to co-op housing? Is that the, is that the focus of the question? Okay, staff could provide clarity on the distinctions.
Senior housing is a category that is currently in our code today. There, it is intended for seniors. Cooperatives are not identified in the code today, and they have typically fallen under group residential when they're in a single building, and they have been known to occupy duplexes, I think, small apartment buildings, and single-family homes, and that goes back to their ownership characteristics and their occupancy limits would be dictated by what's allowed in a single-family home or duplex or an apartment complex. What staff is suggesting is to create, or I should say, expand the cottage court. It does provide for a limitation on occupancy, but it also would allow then sleeping units to occur in a cottage court setting instead of having maybe four dwelling units on a smaller lot. You could have a common building and three sleeping units. So it'd provide an alternative for those smaller lots where you'd have a detached dwelling unit. Or you could still have a co-op operate out of a cottage court or a single-family home.
But let's keep this about the senior housing.
Okay. So for the seniors, they are allowed in different districts, and they have different site development standards. Cooperatives would not have the limitation of the age and still could be an all wide range of districts because it's really dealing with an ownership and operational standpoint.
All right.
The senior housing could be not owned by any of the seniors, but could be owned by a single entity.
Commissioner McGraw, if you don't mind, I want to bounce to some other commissioners and come back to you. They might have similar questions, but you'll still get your other questions. Commissioner Shaw?
So just to clarify, your proposal here is within the residential zones, is to only allow co-ops in the cottage court?
The idea is to allow sleeping units in a cottage court that would allow a co-op of ownership to take place on those, but they could be on single-family lots, still duplexes.
Okay.
They could be in any number of those categories. We're just not calling out specifically ownership when you're looking at a single-family home. It could be a single-family home or co-op. It could be either one on what staff is suggesting.
Okay. So this is only offering up another option for the cottage court?
That's correct, that they could have detached sleeping units in lieu of dwelling units.
Commissioner White.
So in your printout, it says the number of sleeping units will be determined by site development standards. Where should we?
Well, I think, as, as the commission previously, you had acted, I think, allowed up to four units in a cottage court for those smaller lots and eight for a larger lot, but you still have to comply with setbacks and heights. So theoretically, you could get more dwelling units on a larger lot or less dwelling units on a smaller lot, but then you would basically switch out dwelling units for sleeping units. And so that's, it's getting to the number of types of dwellings or types of sleeping units you might have on a property. It allows more flexibility to have that co-op situation on a cottage lot where a cottage lot is already allowed.
So I don't know if that, I don't know if that fully answered my question. So if you were, if you were using the cohousing on a RM...
Yes.
You would, obviously, you'd have to follow all the same impervious cover, setbacks, building cover, but then what would determine your maximum number of units outside of the buildable area?
There would not be a limit per se, just like there's not a limit today on group residential. There's not a density limit on group residential for sleeping units. And this would be treating a cohousing on the same level playing field as a group residential. The difference being that the sleeping units are not contained within the same building as that common area. It would actually allow the separation. So you could have individual buildings that would be sleeping units as defined by building code, and that common building would require a larger lot, obviously, in order to fit them, as opposed to a group residential, which is a single building, which you'd have sleeping units on upper floors possibly and a common kitchen, living area on the first floor.
Thank you. Commissioner McGraw?
So, I'm trying to picture this cottage corner thing. So the way this is written, my understanding is those cottages would be full dwelling units, but now what we're saying in this regime is you could have units that have either a kitchen or a bath. So you could have kitchens in all of those, and then you could have a central restroom building on this lot. Is that correct?
That's correct. I think that's what's allowed by the building code, is that you could have either a, in a sleeping unit, either have a kitchen facility or a restroom facility as part of the sleeping unit, and the common building would probably have the facility that's lacking. So if you had restrooms in the sleeping units, you could have the kitchen in the main building, which would be the common area building.
I mean, it seems to me in, in an urban setting to have a restroom building separate from the dwelling to where you have to actually go outside to get to the restroom building. We haven't done that for like 100 years, and I'm just having a little heartburn over that of what we might be putting into our community if we were to agree to that. Let me ask you this, though. Is there, if you have a group residential, you just said in one building. That's another thing that seems to be hard for us to interpret, but if a group residential decided they wanted a set of cottages with a restroom building, could they do that today? What would prevent that?
I don't, and this is something I might have to ask actually DSD staff, I'm not aware of how we would handle a group residential building with separate sleeping units today.
And while they're doing that, I want to remind all of you guys, let's keep our questions focused on questions, not commentary about our questions. And we're already, I've done it today already, and others have too.
I was going to say, DSD staff is looking, looking that up, but this simply provides another alternative for that style of living.
Well, I think if we, I mean, I don't want to see us complicate things further to create things that are already possible.
Okay. Again, you're getting into commentary again, you're not asking a question. So we can all, we haven't even gotten to our, each person's three minutes, and you can offer the...
I'm just talking about the intent of why I'm asking questions, and I'm sorry if that's not...
No, you can, I'm not going to get into it. Commissioner Seager, Commissioner Shea?
Okay. My question surrounds why we are looking at all these definitions in the R zones when today a group of people can rent a house and have different bedrooms, et cetera, and it's not defined other than single-family residential. Group residential or group housing is defined as one building, and now we have cohousing, which could be multiple buildings. Is there an easier way to bring all this shared housing together?
So I don't believe that today, that you could have, and I'm talking with DSD staff kind of backing me up here, but having, let's say, a single-family home with all the bedrooms detached in a separate...
That's really not what I'm asking. I'm saying an intact, single-family home has four bedrooms, and eight people want to live in that, two people per bedroom. Why do we have to define that as cohousing?
We're not. So what staff is suggesting is that duplex, single-family, the multifamily buildings remain the same.
Remain the same.
And they can be occupied as, as, by a cooperative or not. And then what we're suggesting is that when you get to the detached sleeping units, that those are introduced with a cottage court. So you could either have a dwelling unit, or you could have a sleeping unit. That would be a choice in the cottage court. And then when we get to the level where you would normally have the group residential starting, you could also have, basically in those areas where cottage courts are not allowed, you introduce the cohousing that could have the multiple sleeping units.
So a lot of the answers we're being given is specific to what happens if it's cottage court in that scenario. So it does sort of play out differently in our heads than the normal single-family. Commissioner Shea, and then others.
So in a cottage court scenario, because at this point, it sounds like we're taking something that's usually, you know, a single building such, and we're finding a way to break it apart so it can be detached, yet they still all work together. And in order to be a full, let's say, development of, you know, a complete development, it needs to have the bathrooms, kitchens, everything all together. So is this considered now detached dwelling units, or is it still part of the same? Is it still become a multifamily? Is it still multifamily, or is it now individual dwelling units? Because it's not dwelling units. These are still part of a single whole. So then I keep thinking about anything like accessibility, any type of commercial standards that go with something like this. I mean, is this a way around it, or is it still going to be looked at as a multifamily approach?
So when you, when you look at the cottage court, you're looking at multiple families. I guess you could look at, if there are four, if there are four units on a lot, you'll have four houses on a lot, and this is, gives the opportunity of having sleeping units instead of those dwelling units.
Okay, but it would still come, go with as a multifamily piece?
Yeah, it would still, still have to be probably in an R3 or R4, some district that allows a cottage court that, in order for that to occur.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner White and Commissioner Kenny. And then let's get to our conversation.
So I have a question for DSD. My understanding of the code as it is today is that you can have an accessory building, not to be confused with an ADU, and that the tipping point for when that becomes a dwelling unit has to do with the plumbing fixture count. You could have a full kitchen and a half bath, or you can have a full kitchen and not a, I'm sorry, a full bath and not a kitchen sink. If we're also going to use plumbing for the sleeping units, it sounds like we're doing a different thing with the sleeping units versus, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, why are we changing the threshold for when it becomes a dwelling unit and how that affects where we're at today with accessory buildings versus sleeping units?
Okay. Well, for a dwelling unit, it is a full bathroom and a sink outside of that full bathroom. That's what defines a dwelling unit. An accessory structure would be a half bathroom and a sink outside of that half bathroom. It could also just have a full bathroom in it.
Right. So now they're saying that the sleeping units either have a kitchen or a full bath?
Right, but not both.
But not both?
So it'd be considered like, if it was going to be permitted under the IRC, it'd be considered an accessory structure?
Could you have a full kitchen and a half bath in the sleeping unit?
In a sleeping, so a half bath and a sink outside would still be considered an accessory structure?
So you're talking about like a half, half bath, full kitchen, sounds like you still have a dwelling, I mean, still, you still...
Right now, you don't have a dwelling unit. A half bath and a full kitchen is an accessory building. Is that the same for a sleeping unit? Would a sleeping unit still be a sleeping unit if it was a half bath and a full kitchen?
So my understanding about a sleeping unit has to have either a full bathroom or a kitchen, but not both. So I, so I...
Do you see how that's not really answering the question?
I do, and I'm trying to figure out, because it's a half bathroom, right, and a sink. So it, I mean, for the IRC, it'd still be an accessory structure, and for the IBC, it wouldn't equal a, well, shoot, I mean, I get, I mean, because what's a, what's a kitchen? It's a sink, because everything could be plugged in. So it seems like that would then be a kitchen with a half bath.
So I know from the code standpoint in the past, people have, if you don't have a full kitchen, and it may involve a sink, may also involve having an oven, but there are people that... are people that have hot plates that have used it today to get around that issue.
That's not how DSD defines it, though. DSD defines it specifically by the sinks. And so, so the reason why I'm asking about this is because this determines what these sleeping units actually are and how they operate. And when we start talking about this STR conversation, we need to know exactly what are in these. Are these actually full dwelling units, marauding as sleeping units? Are they going to be defined differently from dwelling units right now? How, like...
So I guess the question might be is, if you're looking at cottage court, and I'm allowing a dwelling unit, or a sleeping unit, is there a difference as far as, you know, looking at the application of what you see out in the field, and what is actually construct, actually constructed on the ground, how it's occupied? So we can get, I guess, we can talk a bit more about in the details, how might this be applied? But if the dwelling units and the sleeping units are still limited on a cottage court, it's just a matter of what the building looks like and what's in it, and the end result is the same, same number of people or less, I'm not sure.
It's not the same number of people.
All right, all right, I'm going to, I'm going to...
But it's not the same number of people. If you're saying that sleeping units are restricted to two, but our dwelling units, our houses are restricted to four...
That's correct.
Right. So that makes a difference on whether it's a dwelling unit or a sleeping unit, right?
Right. But I think you've already made the decision that you're going to allow four dwelling units. And if you're saying the sleeping units are only allowed two, it sounds like we're going to end up with less.
And, and I think to answer your question in regards to a half bathroom and a sink, that would, in my mind, constitute a sleeping unit, because the sink is a kitchen. And, and it doesn't allow for someone to bathe there. And so because it doesn't have that, then it's not a dwelling unit. And so it would still fit the definition of sleeping unit.
And I think based on the answers we're getting, and we're getting into some serious nuances here, which is good, but at the same time, I think we're, it's going to, I think, inform that maybe the motion needs some things that cover, cover the basis of unintended consequences to make sure that those are looked at further if they're, particularly if they're not written here. Some high-level stuff needs to work with that. So I want to, Commissioner Hart, hold on. We have a motion, and we have a motion and a second on this item from Commissioner White and Commissioner Hart. Is there opposition to, is there opposition to this motion as presented?
Chair, I would like to move to table this to the top of Thursday's meeting time certain.
I would really like for us to finish this item. We've had it four times, but three times.
I'm not sure we're able to, and no one has seen this language until five minutes ago. And, and I hesitate to say it, I really do, but I think that if...
I, I, hey, I'm, I'm going to cut you off. I understand if we want to table it, table it. I wish people would bring this up before we start this conversation. We've spent almost 40 minutes today talking about an item we're still not finishing, and we're just burning time. If you, if you don't feel comfortable with it, bring it up to start with, because you want more time to read, I get it. So there's a motion, there's a motion to table. Is there a second motion to table? Second by Commissioner Seager. And the time certain of this was for, for beginning of Thursday meeting? Okay. All those in favor of tabling this to the beginning of Thursday meeting, please say aye. Those opposed abstaining. All right. So we are at, that's a, who do I have, 10 now? No, I have 11 now. So that's 10, 10-01. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdsey, can you please meet with Mr. Nill about this and make sure that he has clarity on this proposal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.